All right, let's get started. Bueller. Bueller. Is it on? Bueller. All right, let's get started. Welcome today to the 4:00 PM Joint Work Session of March 4th.
All right, let's get started.
Woo! Bueller. Do it again, do it again. Yes, it is. All right, one more time. Well, sorry, Tracy. I'm gonna apologize to you. Anyway, it's the March 4th, 2025 Joint Work Session. Please note, all council members and board members are present. With that, I just want to quickly go over our council meeting agenda and our RDA meeting. And see if there's any questions anybody has. In reading those, sorry, in reviewing those. We didn't have a, what Janine said, we didn't have a work session on the budget amendment. So I just didn't, did we need to further discuss that or not? Okay, all right.
Is that, well, sorry, I was slow, I was slow on the uptake. Is that just our regular annual allocation or is that something different?
I will let Janine speak because I will say it the wrong way. So.
It looks like it's on.
Okay, that's better. The Quality Neighborhoods Program was initially started for five years and then it was renewed for five years. The last year, for the last five years, is fiscal year '26. So we made an appropriation for FY '25. This just brings that appropriation for FY '26 forward a few months. So presumably, there won't be an appropriation in the next budget unless they may make the request and we're in tune up of the program. That makes sense?
Thanks.
Good question. Anything else? Do we know who's going to read the?
Yeah, Brandon reached out to me.
Okay, perfect.
Good to do that, thank you.
All right, well, then we will move on. We've got a few things to get through today in our work session. And so first up, we are going to have Ree Thompson, the Executive Director from the Ogden Downtown Alliance, come up and give us the annual report. It should be getting teed up.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your time today. I appreciate hearing a little bit more about the Ogden Downtown Alliance and what our mission and impact was.
Yeah, so you have to hit that, there you go.
Okay, is that working now? There we go. All right, thank you, everybody, for being here. Let me make sure I can drive our screen here and I'll keep it brief because I know you have a big agenda. Okay, so part of the reason why I handed out some printed is because I don't want to go through every single slide here. This slide deck is slightly different than the printed version because we had limited page counts. So I'm going to spend the most time on those pages in this presentation and then you can review my longly worded letter at a later time. But first, I'd just like to introduce myself. I have opportunity to meet and chat with most of you, but not necessarily everybody here in the room. My name is Ree Thompson. I am the Ogden Downtown Alliance's new Executive Director. Actually, on this day last year was my first day working with the organization. I was brought in by the Board of Directors as the interim Executive Director to help the organization stabilize and rebuild so that they can have a greater capacity. We can have a greater capacity moving forward. In late July last year, I officially accepted the role of permanent, however permanent that can be, Executive Director moving forward. And we've been really investing in rebuilding our team this year and listening to the community and asking questions and understanding where do we need to be? What role do we fit in our community between what the city does, what the needs of the small business owners are, and of course, the needs of the events? So that's what we're going to talk through a little bit more today in part of our annual report. As a quick reminder, I know you all are very familiar with the Ogden Downtown Alliance. I'm a new face, but the organization is not new. But just as a little reminder to everybody, our mission, the Ogden Downtown Alliance, is committed to increasing economic vitality and community vibrancy throughout Ogden's Central Business District. We support local commerce through placemaking, destination marketing, focused community programming, and events. We create and promote a dynamic epicenter for arts, entertainment, and cultural experiences in Ogden's downtown. So the way that we do that is structured through six pillars as part of our strategic plan. And those pillars are business support, marketing, arts programming, placemaking, events programming, and coordination with Ogden City's Community and Economic Development Department. The team behind this mission and that we've been rebuilding over this last year is pictured here on the screen. So you're going to see some new faces downtown as you've been walking around and chatting with business owners. We are now up to, we actually do have a missing face on this team that just joined us last month, Cecily Kiss. So we're now up to five full-time staff members and two part-time, which is a shift from the past when it's been seven full-time. So we're still rebuilding our capacity here and have a wonderful events team that helps execute the large events, such as the farmers market and a whole slew of volunteers that we're continuing to build that database that helped make this all happen. As a part of those aforementioned events, we have Farmers Market Ogden, that's 26 weeks of the year. We also have Community Favorite Harvest Moon Celebration in September, Historic 25th Street Car Show in June. That's the first event coming up here soon, in addition to Farmers Market. And new under the Ogden Downtown Alliance's umbrella is the Ogden Arts Festival. So we have acquired that event from Nurture the Creative Mind and will be bringing it back to the community in 2025 at Union Station on July 19th and 20th. Going into our 2024 Community Impact, the Ogden Downtown Alliance team hosted 27 free community events throughout the year that impacted the lives of 264,000 event attendees. Created $11.3 million in economic impact for our community and served 61% Weaver County residents. But we were definitely surprised to see a lot of out-of-town folks come to the farmers market and our events, not necessarily to travel here for them, but as a part of that shows what our Ogden community is and sense of place in Ogden's downtown. We also utilized 120 volunteers that donated over 600 hours of their time to help do these events and supported 709 families by distributing over $70,000 worth of SNAP and Double Up Food Bucks market incentives to help families in need expand that dollar on fresh local produce. Some of the high-level numbers, which are always some fun stats to go through for these events that we produced in 2024. Farmers Market Ogden saw over 212,000 visitors throughout the season and an 8% increase over 2023 numbers with average dwell time of over an hour 65 minutes. Car Show also saw an increase, smaller increase of 2% up to 22,000 visitors and 75 minutes of dwell time downtown. And Harvest Moon Celebration, a pretty significant increase over 2023 with 30,000 visitors and over 100 minutes of dwell time downtown. This data is all captured through Placer AI, which is a automated Big Brother digital system that us visit Ogden and Ogden City all partner to help pay for and operate so that we have some of this data to help secure funding. On the impact of what we do outside of the local businesses we support and the vendors that are supported through these events, we do also have a very heavy involvement and impact on our local artist community. Where 386 artists and entertainers were paid to perform or to produce art for our events in 2024. And we're very thankful to Weaver County Ramp for helping provide the funding for us to do that. We also received quite a bit of press coverage and some accolades last year. Most notably, we were voted number one farmers market in Utah and through the Farmers Market Network Celebration. And also received some great press coverage and hits in arts and outdoor events areas for our community. Through our marketing and business support efforts, we hosted two window decorating competitions last year, Trick or Treat Streets and Window Wonderland. These are placemaking types of endeavors that help us have a vibrant downtown themed events for those areas where we don't have events programming, sorry, not events, window displays, so that you kind of have a sense of the feeling of Halloween and trick-or-treating as well as winter and that local shopping for shopping. as well as winter and that local shopping for shop local for where to find your local gifts. In addition, we operate nine different social media accounts that had reached over a million people this year through all organic reach. So that's no paid marketing, that is just organic reach. We were able to reach over a million people to help kind of show what is, what do we do here in Ogden? And what is our community about downtown? Through our business engagement, we also host our quarterly town hall meetings. So we hosted four of those last year that rotated between the different districts' areas to highlight different event spaces as well as kind of come to where the people are to make it easier for business owners to attend those meetings. We averaged about 50 to 55 business owners in each of those meetings. And through that, we also started to collect some data and feedback on what is most valuable to them as part of those meetings in terms of content provided, information shared, and learning more about how can we do what we've done in the past better? Or what needs to come back that maybe has sunset from the organization based on what the needs of the business owners are? So through part of that, we've started setting some goals of what we can achieve in 2025, leading up to some more strategic planning that will be launched in 2026, and conducted a business owner feedback survey to understand what are your needs? What would you like to see from the Ogden Downtown Alliance? As well as what would you like to see in your communities? So something I wanted to share with you all here today is some of that feedback that some of the top areas that business owners reported they would like to see investment in downtown are public restrooms, green and landscaping, cleanliness of the downtown areas, street lighting, and public art were the top ones ranked in order. We've also learned that only 65% of the business owners that responded were satisfied with the level of communication support that they've been receiving from ODA. So we know that that's an area that we can improve and do better on this year. And we also saw that 38.5% of business owners that responded to the survey feel there are not enough collaborative opportunities between the downtown alliance and local businesses. So that's just one indicator of areas that we can improve, gather additional data to hone in on exactly what services need to be provided so that I hope by this time next year, I'm presenting you a better update with more information on how we can best fill those needs. Some of the goals that we've discussed are bringing back the monthly newsletter for those business owners as well as helping share town hall recaps in additional ways for those that can't attend the meetings and have more opportunities for businesses to be involved through small sponsorship opportunities through the events, district-specific programming beyond the large events that we produce, and additional shop local campaigns and marketing support to highlight new businesses as they open or have hit milestones throughout the year. Another survey that we conducted was for the general feedback to get a pulse on the community of what needs, do we need in downtown Central Business District? And which of those can be solved by the downtown alliance? And which of, can we be best to be a communication liaison to help you all know what are people thinking about? What are they interested in? So on the event side, we found here, it's probably hard to see on your screen, but the money spent downtown during events, that large purple section is 46.2% of the survey respondents said that they spent over $100 when they come downtown to an ODA event while they're downtown supporting those law, those small businesses. 20%, 26% was 50 to $100 range, and then 19.2% was the $25 to $50 range. How they would like to receive information, the top response was social media, followed by email, local news, and website, all being similar in responses. And then shortly after that are local events calendars, and that small one you see on the end there is radio. Top reasons for attending were community engagement, live entertainment, supporting local businesses, shopping, dining, and family-friendly activities. And the improvements that people would like to see are public art, shaded seating, greenery and landscaping, water fountains, public restrooms, and recycling bins. Some of the feedback that we heard on other improvements are mostly oriented towards parking, which we won't talk about today because I know we've all talked about that a lot, and as well as shade and seating available on the street.
Can I ask you a question about?
Absolutely.
I was really surprised you didn't see, get some input about wayfinding.
About wayfinding signage?
Yeah, that's what I would expect that somebody would have said.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to dig into the details and pull out specifics of anybody who did mention wayfinding, but that did not come up as one of the top ones that were through these. I will say that I do think it is still needed, particularly for our out-of-town visitors as well as people in the community that don't know where to find things. And this is a relatively small data set. This survey that we're looking at right here had 103 survey responses. So my hope is that we can continue to strengthen how we collect survey data so that we can come and have thousands of responses here to showcase what the real needs are because 100 is a small data set. So I just want to, as a data head, I want to highlight that for you as well. These next couple of slides here, I'm not going to go into detail because you do have a printed report and we've talked through the high level, but they just go through and highlighting a little bit more about each of these events and the impact that we had as a part of them. Farmer's Market having 350 unique vendors throughout the season and highlighting a local artist as part of our poster artwork. Historic 25th Street Car Show, same, similar vibe here. We won't go into much detail, but we had 350 registered vehicles as a part of it and incorporated the community through art coloring book and a live mural painting. And Harvest Moon Celebration, we had 86 different vendors as a part of this, saw a huge increase in participation and really invested time and energy into creating memorable experiences for photo opportunities, things that will live in people's family legacy and their, you know, their baby books for years to come. Was a really fun element that we added this year to Harvest Moon. Hey, to wrap us up here, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank our wonderful Board of Directors who have helped me navigate this first year at the Ogden Downtown Alliance and welcome some of our new board members who are starting here in 2025. Deanne Arms with the Ogdenite and Vanessa Castanoli with Ogden Contemporary Arts will be our Nine Rails representative this year. So we're very excited to welcome them to the ODA team. And I'd also would like to thank our sponsors and partners in the community. Sponsorships is a huge thing that we are investing in, figuring out more ways to incorporate our corporations as well as our local small businesses and how they can support the downtown alliance. Because as all local nonprofits or all nonprofits have a challenge, funding and fundraising is a huge challenge for our organization and making sure that we have the funding that we need to support the small business owners. So we're building out some sponsorship opportunities for local corporations like to help support that effort and endeavors to kind of round out our funding to make sure that we can produce the programming that we do and hopefully expand that in the future. With that, are there any questions I can answer? Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Ree, are there any? Go ahead.
Just quick questions, not, I don't know if this is a question or not, but you know, it was interesting to see the public restrooms was one of the top for businesses and individuals as seen as a need. And you know, as we, as we look forward to 2034 with the Olympics and hoping to activate that downtown and bring, bring the world to Ogden. Is, do business owners see that as an opportunity to partner in that effort? Or is it just, hey, the city needs to provide this, let's figure out a way to do that? I mean, what's that, what's the perspective of the downtown folks?
That's a great question. I would need to do some asking around to really specifically answer that. Generally, I will say a lot of the business owners feel very fatigued from people trying to use their personal bathrooms when they're not shopping there because there isn't a public restroom option, not just during events, but generally throughout, throughout time. So, but if, in terms of would anybody be willing to partner as a part of that? I think that's a really interesting discussion that we could, we could shop out to a couple of folks and get some more feedback on, on what might that look like.
Yeah, just, I think just looking for any kind of solution and maybe, maybe there's things we can do as a city, but also just what else, what else can be done and recognizing that, you know, 2034 is coming and this could be a good way to, you know, get some momentum moving towards that, to beyond 2034.
Yeah, and whether that's through some of the new development with Wonder Block or Union Station or if it's its own standalone structure, I know that that's, that's definitely a need. In terms for our organization, we pay, you know, over about $30,000 or more dollars a year just to bring in porta-potties. And so if, if we had some more permanent structures, I think that that would reduce some expense that we pay as well as I know Ogden City has some porta-potty expenses with Twilight and some of their other events. So just on the expense reduction side, finding a solution would certainly help our organization. But also, I was surprised to see how many people felt that same way as well on those feedback surveys that public bathrooms were in need for downtown.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions I can answer?
Yeah, just had a quick question about the, with the art festival coming back to, or coming to your organization, is there funding that goes along with that? Because I'm, yeah, I am concerned about the stretching, the staff, and the funding adding an additional event.
Absolutely. So yes, there is because arts, arts festivals inherently have more opportunities for grant funding through arts and humanities fundings and foundations. So specifically looking through, you know, Utah Arts and Museums and some other funders on the local level that can help support that, much of which we've already received to produce it for this year. In terms of the long-term sustainability of the team, the farmer's market itself is, has about 15,000 people there every weekend and the three city blocks and closing, is it nine streets? Seven or nine, I can't remember off the top of my head, different streets. There's a capacity of, a volume of people that we need to have on the street in order to do that event. And so we're in a little bit of a point where we actually needed to bring on another event to support and sustain the staffing that we need to do the farmer's market as well as Harvest Moon and Car Show. And so this event that we brought on is meant to invest back into the arts and be a part of that. But as we've built our revenue models and allocated staff time that will take to produce the event, this helps round out to make sure that we can support an event staff to produce the farmer's market as well as those other events.
I have a follow-up on that too, just noticing that some Nine Rails, you know, maybe social media and then also some other elements there. So is the downtown alliance kind of expanding into the Nine Rails district?
So the Nine Rails has always been a part, or I shouldn't say always because I don't have the history, but to my knowledge, Nine Rails has been a part of the Central Business District that the Ogden Downtown Alliance has been operating in. But we've had capacity challenges to actually fully operate in all of those areas. And so the approach we're taking now as we're working towards, our strategic plan expires in 2026. So we're working on doing a lot of community feedback and understanding what are the needs of stakeholders in the business districts today so that we understand how do we best support all of the downtown districts within the CBD? And so that might mean that we provide some of the programming or it might mean that we support other people who are providing programming and elevate that through marketing campaigns and through hosting community meetings and having good collaboration there. But I will say that we have to be very intentional and careful about what we agree to and not agree to to make sure that we have the funding capacity to support it. So I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, I want to underpromise and overdeliver.
For sure, well, and I'm all about, you know, saving money where we can, but that might be something we need to think about is to add additional funds to the budget to help support because you are doing so much for our community.
I, I would absolutely agree, but I want to make sure that I have a really good, solid understanding of what those needs are before I come back to you with any pitch that would look like that. Just to make sure that I, we've crossed all, dotted all our i's, crossed all our t's, have a good understanding of what are the needs of the community so that we can collaboratively work together to find that funding. But absolutely, I would appreciate any brains that have connections in the room and helping align some funding sources because we can spend time fundraising or we can spend time doing the programming, but it's hard to do both. So, yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
All right, well, good job.
Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it. And if you, I couldn't pass out cards if you need it. I think most of you should have my contact information, but always happy to have follow-up meetings and chat about some of the ideas and things that we're doing at the downtown alliance. So, thank you.
And thanks for inviting us to the town halls and all the things that you do too, so.
Absolutely.
That helps us too.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda item is Zone Ogden. I think Brandon, I saw Brandon. You want to come up and?
Oh, John Jensen.
I was gonna say, I thought I saw John walk in. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, John, with our consultant team, Logan Simpson is going to give us an update, so.
Great. And do you have a presentation as well, John? Or, oh, it's already up, thanks.
Hello again to all of you. It's nice to see you all. This is meant to be an update of where we are on the code update. And I've been assured that Barton and Brandon will chime in every once in a while from that corner back there. So I hope you get them on the recorded documents here. So, yeah, we've been moving along. Here's what we'd like to cover tonight, just what we're doing, what our process is, where we are progress-wise. We have done a lot of drafting and we have a little bit of an update and overview, high-level overview of that for you all to take a look at and then what's coming up next. So I think you've seen this before, this was, I think, part of our proposal, actually. We did an assessment and looked at all your ordinances, made comments on them, and tried to come up with kind of our general plan of action. Drafting is the thing we're in the middle of at the moment. Actually, it's a pretty huge deal. Up in the corner of that slide, you see the four pieces of your ordinances that are coming together for this unified development code. So that would be your zoning regs, the outdoor signs, the landmarks, your historic resources, and subdivision regulations.
Hey, John, if you could just, I don't want to get you off track too much, but I think for the public, maybe just kind of understand, we've got two different major things going on now. One is Plan Ogden and one is Zone Ogden and making sure people, or maybe you're going to get to that. So maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, so.
We're good.
Just make sure you hit that when you get there.
Okay, we will. And that is sort of on a couple of slides, that's all right. So the general plan effort, the update of your general plan, your vision for the future is happening at the same time as the code work, updating your code. You have the Logan Simpson team that is on both of those projects. So they're working together. I may have said this before, but often you do a general plan first and then you do the code afterward to implement your general, general plan. We got started on code a little bit earlier than the general plan, but they've caught up a little bit with the visioning process that I think you're all familiar with at this point. After the visioning for them, there's the write-up of the general plan, which is actually a huge undertaking, a lot of required parts and from the state law and just an awful lot to do. We think that's going to be about the end of the year when that wraps up. We're going to try to go a little bit ahead of that with our code effort. Otherwise, we'll run out of budget, I think, right? So as you can see in this slide, make sure I got the right one up there, yep. We're thinking that the adoption process for the code is going to be sometimes summer, fall, at least get started. Just realize that that's a huge undertaking also. You have public hearings with the Planning Commission. Then it comes to you after a recommendation from them, and that takes a while. So it's going to have quite a few pages. How's that? Does that make sense then for the combining the two? And I think the fact that we're, you have the same team working on it really does go hand in hand. And you do get us going, oh, wait a minute, in the code, that means this. Or did you address this that's already in the code? Those kinds of things, so we're trying hard to do that. Okay? Okay, so it's a little ways off. Just was going to show you a slide from an event we had last week with the Make Ogden and combined it with Zone Ogden folks. And we had a poster trying to get some input on a couple of different issues. We had about 15 or 17 posters now that I think about it with lots of questions and things that we were trying to get some input on. This one's about the Canyon Gateway Zone and some other, but we had an awful lot in there. So just telling you, we're, we're doing that ongoing kind of thing. Every several months, we'll try and get the pulse of the community on the issues that we see in the ordinances. Let me throw one more thing in. We are meeting every month with an advisory committee for the code. And then we go to the Planning Commission after that. And they're all workshops, okay? Because that adoption process is once we're all comfortable with the actual text, the diagrams, the graphics, whatever we got in there. And that's going to take a while, so just mentioning that. So this gives you an idea of how far we've gotten. You see an orange there, these are the chapters that we've at least vetted the drafts. Quite a bit there, it would appear to me to be over halfway. But I would also say that special use standards, development standards, those are big chapters. So that'll take us a little while to wade through those. We're currently working on the special use one, goes to the advisory committee next week. Goes to the advisory committee next week and then planning commission the week after that. But that only has thirty chapters or something like that. So it's a lot of, lot of information. But we're getting there and I'm just going to try in this presentation to quickly go over some of the things, the high-level things that we've done in these chapters. From a general standpoint, here's the things that we've done essentially throughout. Reorganization, lots of changes about where things are and where they end up, but trying to focus those where it makes more sense. So you don't have to hunt throughout the ordinances to find things. Tables instead of lists. I'm going to show you an example of that in a second. Just consistent standards. We heard from one of our open houses that there were a lot of with property lines not necessarily in the right place and homes that maybe are close to property lines, closer than what the zoning allows. Those kinds of things. And so we've tried to reduce some of those kinds of standards so that there's more flexibility and folks don't have to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment all the time to get a permit. So those kinds of things are in here. Special standards. The way you had that in all these chapters was at the end of the chapter. And so the chapters would go on and on and on. Essentially, the zone chapters now have the uses and the spatial standards, so the setbacks, heights, those kinds of things. If you want to look for other standards, there'll be a reference to the special standards chapter. So special use chapter. There's just an interesting thing. You have a little bit of sign information here, a little bit over there, a little bit of landscaping here, a little bit over there. And we are trying to put all that stuff together in one place so that you really, it's easier to find and it's more consistent. You'll have a lighting chapter and I heard you just talked about parking the other day, but we're going to talk about parking again since there's a parking chapter too. We will have more permitted uses, so has a greater role as we go through this. I think probably all familiar with the administrative versus legislative discussions. And state seems to want us to do more administrative things. So we're trying to accomplish that. Graphics are different and updated and going to be more consistent, easily readable. Formatting, we're trying to be consistent with the formatting in each chapter. And then we also had definitions all over the place and we're trying to get that all in one chapter too. So that's, that's the overall picture. Just wanted to give you this example. Here we have for the residential zones, permitted use list goes on for a couple of days. And this is how they've changed. Okay? So you can see the different zones, whether it's permitted or not, or it's an accessory use of some sort. All of that is in one place. Okay? And hopefully not quite as long a list as we've had in the past. All right? Okay, so just going to zip through some of these, we've called these drafts. They're really groups of ordinances, ordinance drafts. Procedures, definitely a big undertaking here. Brand new way to process permits and to categorize them. You see here, this types one through four, and I'll show you a little graphic of that in a minute. But a lot of communities have a basic kind of a procedures, like these are the administrative and these are legislative. We've broken those down more specifically because you have all kinds of types really under those categories. And so the one through four are administrative and then five is something where you're going to have a public hearing with the planning commission and then a recommendation made to you all. Okay? And you all make the final decision. We have a lot of tables we've added to that and we'll just hope you'll take a look at those because that's an interesting and a new way to do things. Site plans, obviously a major part of the processing that we do and we've added a little more detail to that. Conditional use permit, hopefully everybody's familiar with that. I know you are. Usually don't see those, right? So conditional use permits are a little bit more discretionary. They're in our type four, which does go to the planning commission. We had an interesting conversation about the input we get at planning commission for those kinds of applications with the planning commission last week. And, and actually advisory committee too. And I think we're changing our notice a little bit that goes out to make it more clear that it's not just an opinion we're looking for. We're looking for factual information in conditional use permits. So financial securities, you know, bonding, states changed a few things in the last few years. One of them is bonding for private landscaping. So we've come up with some ways to try and address that. State doesn't want us to bond at all for private landscape. So it becomes either an enforcement nightmare or you come up with some other ideas on how to process and get those things to happen. So this is just showing you the types for the procedures. So very simple, straightforward ones over the counter. That's type one. One where we have a little bit more of a staff review involved. That's type two. Type three, I would say, if I could add to this, I would say internal public meetings. Because you may have a committee within the departments that meet together to look at a particular application. That's what happens in type three. Again, that's administrative. Type four, you actually get the notices out and public meetings that happen. Type five, again, come your way. Okay? Any questions on that part? Because that is new. All right?
Is that, is that, you're following state code on that or?
State code just talks about administrative and legislative. That's all.
They're not talking about public notice.
More detailed way to go about it.
And are you giving timeframes in there or have you suggested timeframes or is that something that's going to be left up to us?
Well, there's a couple of those that have state mandated timeframes. We've tried not to do that too much in here because sometimes you never know what's coming up and it's hard to stick to some of those deadlines, right? But over the counter should be like you walk in and you can take care of that right then. Okay? Staff review might take a little while. Where you've got a lot to do on an application. That probably takes more time. Conditional uses, you have a timeframe there for getting a notice out and have to be noticed with the planning commission agenda. And then I think you're all pretty familiar with the noticing requirements for public hearings, which is what happens with the type five.
I guess where I was going with that, maybe, maybe my question, I need to be more specific. Are there best practices? So staff review, sixty days, ninety days, hundred and twenty days, if it's conditional. You know, if there's other issues or, you know, then another twenty days or something. I just didn't, I didn't know if there were best practices.
Yeah, so I think those are really individual city issues. You know, some cities that have private consultants coming in and doing the work for them. They may have a big workload and they can't get, meet some deadline that they're supposed to. Other cities internally, it just takes a while. I don't know of bad practices, which would be, you know, some rezone process that takes a couple of years. Okay? Which just seems ridiculous to me, but I haven't seen anybody saying you ought to be able to do this in ninety days, this, that and the other thing. But we do have some timelines for subdivisions, for example. So.
I would hope that as we make this more simple, more simplified, this level, that maybe that's. I know that that's part of the reason why the legislature gets mad at us every year. Not us, not Ogden City, but process fast enough and do those kinds of things. So I just wondered if there were best practices. That's all.
And I think on the other side there, yes, this is going to be easier to manage and process. Again, you won't have everything all mixed up all over the place in there. You won't have a different setback for this, that and the other thing too. So it should be easier and so therefore faster.
Thanks.
Again, one of the things that really is tough on the community is you get invited to a meeting. And the way the, the permit works, it's going to be approved. Okay? But you want to say, I hate it. I don't like it. I don't do, this is not my thing, you know? And we're trying to avoid that happening as much as possible. So.
Thanks. That, that helps. I think we, we always hear the complaints, never the, the reasons. Thanks.
We've heard some in our open houses. So, yeah, trying to address that. We have a section on variances and appeals. Again, these usually end up as type four applications. State did another thing a few years back. For a variance, you have to meet five criteria and have to meet them all. So that's not as like the Board of Zoning Adjustment just says, yeah, we'll vary that. That sounds good. They have to meet this five criteria part of it. Reasonable accommodations, we felt like those could be handled by Barton, the planning director. Those are basically helping out modifying some part of our ordinance so that people with disabilities have a chance to access places. Appeals, again, goes to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. This one, we're going to change up just a little bit. We had a thirty day in there just right now. If you had a decision, a written decision that you wanted to appeal, you had thirty days to do that. You know, have somebody drop in on the twenty-ninth day and then you can't get ready for meetings coming up very easily. This one, we're suggesting that they send us some kind of a letter notification within ten days. And then they get another twenty days to get the formal application in. There is an interesting little debate on some of that, which is, let's see, I gotta get my Latin correct. De novo versus on the record. How's that? Just basically means when you get, can you bring new information to that hearing? And should you be allowed to do that? And the discussion we've had so far is the answer is no. You should do what's on the record and if you want to bring new information, you should drop back into the planning commission. So that's where we're headed with that one. Residential zones, you saw one example there a minute ago. Here's some new things. We have a new zone we're suggesting, an R1 2.5, which is a twenty-five-hundred square foot lot. A concept called lot size averaging, which I'll just use that one as an example and use my math brain tonight. If you came in with an R1 2.5, 2.5 zone, you could actually do a lot that's two thousand square feet, as long as you did one that's three thousand square feet. So that average ends up as 2.5. Okay? So that's a different concept in here. You already have some ordinances on use.
Can I ask about that?
Yep, sure.
So that only works for subdivisions, you know, so it wouldn't be like, could, could a person just do a lot division and say, I'm going to have you do?
So, you know, that might be something we need to take a look at, but hadn't thought of applying this to the lot division. But it'd be a new subdivision. Maybe we need to say three or more, four or more.
I mean, the other, the other thing that kind of must might is our corner lots are always required to have a little bit more square footage than, than the interiors. And so that's good, there's good reasoning behind that. Is that in, you know, involved in this new thought process?
Well, it's basically suggesting you could do something with those. Those are interesting too, because those seem like they're really good situations for a cottage lot. You know, where you're sending your ordinances, a fifteen-hundred square foot lot. You can put a single-family home on and divide it off of another lot. Has to be on a public street or an alley. But that ability is in here already as an infill option. Could you shrink the corner lot? That's going to be Barton going to answer it.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, those are the things that kind of come out. A little bit bigger than your lots. Brings up another question then. Setbacks. That, that's the reason for the additional space. What are you going to do about those?
There's generally reducing the required setbacks. We really wanted to have more flexibility and one way to do that is with reducing setbacks. So, okay? You already have an ordinance on reuse of historic buildings, those kinds of things. We just put a few more use options in there. Graphics show up all over the place in these and anything that we had as special additional use requirements moved to the special use chapter. So, okay. Infill options, something we've talked about a couple of these open houses, talked about in the general plan also. A bunch of different choices here. There's one pretty new one. And maybe one we're not doing, which is duplexes. But anyway, lots on a private right-of-way, which is the drawing to the bottom right there. Essentially, it's a private road with small lots on that as an infill option. ADUs you already have, but there's a new one that came up this year from Farmington, which they're allowing. Not a detached ADU, but a detached, separate, small lot on a larger lot. Okay? And their thought there is that's affordable housing possibility with a fairly small lot, a fairly small house. And you don't have to have a driveway to get there. You can have just an easement to go to it. So that's a new concept. We've aired that a bit in the open houses. Haven't heard too much as long as that wasn't next door to my, to my house, right? So it seems pretty good, but it's a new one. Multi-household, maybe the household name is new also, instead of multi-family, which is what we usually have said in the past, but that's the new name these days. Got rid of one zone. You had two zones that had the really long section after about the design standards for those zones. So that's the east-central neighborhoods, R2 and R3. We're changing that one to an overlay instead of having repeated stuff in both chapters. And again, more permitted uses and conditional adds the infill options we talked about and lot size averaging. And again, more consistent setbacks, but shorter ones with more flexibility. So non-residential zones, you may have heard this already. We're talking about dropping the CP, the planned zones. And just have a C1, C2 and C3. C1 being neighborhood commercial, community commercial for the C2 and then more of a regional commercial philosophy for C3. And that's actually a big change. Mixed-use zone was basically really confusing and we tried to clear that up. Really sort of forced everybody. Really sort of forced everybody to go to the RDA or CRA now. And you don't really have to do that, right? If if you're not going to the RDA, CRA for some kind of help with your development, there's no reason to go to that board. So we just took that out, they have their own regulations. Okay? And development agreements, probably you'll see that is used in that zone when someone comes in and requests that. May also be that you end up with sub-districts within that zone that cover an area with particular regulations, which is what you have now, okay? Airport, just simplified some things there and separated out the flight path into a overlay. There's a new zone section here that we've mentioned, community facility zones. Probably would've called those institutional in the past, but we're trying a new term here, community facilities. So you got community campus, things like Weber State, tech school, professional office zone, and then community facility zone, be more like the high schools and larger campus kind of places. Canyon Gateway is the idea that heading up the canyon, seeing when you think about the Olympics, we probably should have some kind of a hospitality-oriented zone there. You've got one there at the moment called Recreation, what is that again? Yeah, Rainbow Gardens, doesn't really allow very much, so we're trying to push more of a hospitality-oriented zone there. And a little bit different way to approach how do you, how do you design the buildings? So, thought there, or?
Well, I apologize for, I just making one of my calls here. Great idea, get a lot, but a lot of canyon right now.
Yeah, at the mouth, there is. But ten years, things change, right? And ten years, you got something called an Olympics up there somewhere. So I think there's some opportunities there, so, okay. And industrial zones, just quickly, dropped out junkyards, so they'll be a non-conforming use in the future. And a little bit of my humor for your favorite uses here, those are generally in the industrial zones. So again, you'd have the use allowed there, but the standards for that is in the special use standards or chapters. Outdoor storage was varying all over the place, we're gonna try and make that more consistent. And the idea that you have a percentage of landscaping you have to meet on every site, we just sort of feel like the landscaping ought to do something where it actually functions, okay? Like it's, makes the property look better up next to the street, or you're have landscaping in front of your outdoor storage. Or you're next to residential and you ought to have a buffer there of some sort. But just having a percentage where you end up with chunks of landscaping that don't serve a purpose, we're not so sure that ought to remain, so. Downtown, you all did the work on downtown two and a half, three years ago now, and so not a lot of changes. But we did find some things in there that just needed to be fixed. Some of the graphics seemed off. You know, that one is a form-based code, lots of times those use lots of phrases that most folks can't understand, even planners. So we tried to clarify some of that and just try to make it more consistent with the rest of the ordinances that we've been working on. The overlay zones, you do have quite a few of those. Limited use used to be called the conditional zone, conditional overlay, but it's where you allow a development to come in and limit the number of uses that they will have. So now we're calling it limited use, seemed to make more sense. We didn't really want the word conditional, it would be confused with conditional uses also, so. That one's there, you have a flood zone, you have sensitive lands, we've added to that and organized that some more. This is where you're gonna have the flight path overlay for the airport. Twelfth Street, didn't do an awful lot with that either, but you have two sub-districts within that that really get a lot of locational and access standards. Livework, used to be called the transit overlay, but really only had the one use, livework, that you're adding to areas along Harrison and Twenty-Fifth. So new title there. And the East Central essentially takes what was in those two zones as the add-ons to that chapter and makes that an overlay for the two zones, okay? All right.
Yep. The Twelfth Street corridor. Not fully aware of Twelfth Street corridor is what this is for, but it seems to me.
Yeah.
And so when you talk about that corridor there, can you just elaborate a bit to see how you're going to do at the reserve?
Well, the two sub-districts cover design standards in each. They're similar, but a little bit different, and I know Barton's gonna add to that. And the area, let's just talk about the area, too, it's, there's two, two sections.
Yeah, so the Twelfth Street corridor is really east of Washington, it's not west of Washington. So it's all east of Washington up to the mouth of the canyon. That was an area where we had a lot of single-family zoning, some office zoning, kind of a hodgepodge of zoning. And so years ago, we created this Twelfth Street overlay, which has some very specific development standards. And it said, you can go under the current zoning, if you're a R one-six zone, you want to just do a single-family house, or you wanna do a church according to that zone, you can do it. But if you wanna do multifamily or office or commercial on that corridor, you can do it, but here's very specific standards you have to meet. And so that's what a lot of the development you've seen, again, east of Washington, has been under the Twelfth Street corridor, the townhomes and the apartments. And we actually have one more, one new sort of commercial building going up under that Twelfth Street corridor standards.
And the break on the two districts is Washington to Harrison, Harrison to the canyon.
Yeah.
Okay. Did that help?
Can I ask a question about the the flight path overlay? It, I get, you gotta restrain some distance away from airport, don't you? Elevation that the airplane has to beat at that point?
Well, there's a couple of different things, there's a width, for sure, okay?
It'd kinda do.
Yep. Yep. And then height, it's very concerned about height of buildings underneath that. And then uses, too, where would you want residents right underneath there? Probably not. So that that's the theory of it, and we're actually talking about a little bit of a buffer, too, to it.
Yeah, yeah, there is a standard way of measuring it. It's what's called an imaginary surface, and it's this 3D model where if you're right.
The FAA uses.
It's, yes, it's something, every airport uses that measures how far you are from the airport.
Right.
If you're to the side, or.
That makes sense, that's why I asked the question. I I mean, if we just said that flight path, the only one that really would affect us very much is is runway two-one, because that goes up and through the city, and it would, you just went until the end of the boundary of the city, it'd take a lot.
Yeah.
Unless we, unless we did what the FAA does.
Well, it is, it's based on FAA standards, right? And you can look at your zoning ordinance or zoning map now and see those lines, actually. It was one of the things we talked about somewhere a while back, and suddenly they're there, so.
Cool, yeah, I'll look.
Yeah, but it's 3D, and so you see the line, but then you gotta figure out, well, okay, here I can be two hundred feet tall, or here you can be eighty feet tall, and.
Well, the FAA.
Yep, yep, that's what we use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Another question.
Yep.
We so rarely get to talk about these concepts that you bring up, and they've been concerned, and so just for my informational. Are we comfortable with our Twelfth Street wall zone? Get this one from agricultural in my lifetime, to set my investment. Now I'm not sure from that. Is that a part of the zoning that we're addressing today?
Yes, no, it's more on the the general plan side. I know a good example we were not comfortable with was the multifamily that was going on that corridor without any supportive services, and that's why we did that zone change last year that said no more apartments along that corridor. But yeah, there's, there is a lot of concern about both uses that are going on and the facilities that are available, but we're looking at both in the general plan and in the code update.
Can I, to his point, I mean, this new way of looking at things, still gonna be able to look at corridor plans? And so could we say, you know what, we're, there need corridor plan west of of Washington, on Twelfth Street? And then embark on that kind of a process?
Yes, and I would add to that Twenty-Fourth Street, too, because that's.
For sure. I would just use it on the example.
Yep, yep, and we're doing, for the Twenty-Fourth Street interchange, corridor plan for that right now. So yes, that's still a tool that's in the tool box.
Great, okay.
And your general plan's gonna have something about that anyway, right? Because you, one piece of that is what's called the future land use map, and so it's gonna have some suggestions for what happens west of Washington. That's happening soon, actually, too, so there's, there, okay. I know you're, my time's about up.
Hey, John, before you move on, let's make sure, getting into our mics, it sounds like there might be some issues on, from the outside. Can't hear us, so if you could just make, speak up, that'd be awesome.
Okay. Is mine on? Okay, sorry, oh, there's the green, I was looking for it down there. Okay, historic resources, I mean, you've already got a really well-functioning landmark. And we just added a few things here and there, reorganized a little bit. One of the pieces you may wanna talk about at some point is we've got some information there about how to remove people from the board if they're being a problem, being rude, being not showing up, not being prepared. And we did that actually in the Board of Zoning Adjustment also. I'm just throwing that in, that's something new, something to think about, but fair amount there, but all existing information that you've got, so. Non-conforming uses, just again, trying to be more flexible with some of these. And if, one of the issues that we tried to get into is, is it a minor kind of a thing? There's this term in state law called non-conformities, which really is meant for things like fences, landscaping, signs, those kinds of things. Can staff handle those kinds of non-conformities? And our suggestion is, yes, they could, consider those minor. So that's part of that one. Wrapping up here, what's next? I mentioned we meet with both the Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission every month. Special use chapters underway and airing those next week with the Advisory Committee. And development standards, there's a couple other little chapters that'll be April. Land divisions, you've actually kind of seen once a while back, but it's already a year plus, right? We tried to do some immediate updates to meet state law a year ago or so, and you all passed those, so those have been adopted in the past, but we'll take one more look at those as we go through. And let's see, I think the one other one that's missing there is the infill ordinances, those will come as part of that. Just in terms of our process, you get all of that done, right? And it's great, you all think it's all perfect, but it usually is not, okay? You gotta go through and check all the references, make sure it all makes sense, that we haven't repeated things here and there. And with a code this size, that's gonna take us a little while. That's why we suggested summer and the fall for the adoption process. When that happens, we are at the moment thinking all at once, but we'll see how that goes. Sometimes that doesn't happen, so.
Could I ask another question?
You bet.
This, and I might drift off somewhere else, but you know, in our, in our land map, kind of a thing, the map, but where it's conditional, permitted, or not permitted.
Yeah.
Showed that, something new and. Okay, so what are we, since conditional uses don't really work quite like they did when in, when we originally entered into the code.
Yeah.
How are we dealing with those?
So it's got a lot of additions in that chapter. They still go to the Planning Commission. But the way that works now in state law is detrimental effects have to be looked at, and those are the things that they can deal with. I'll just say detrimental effects is kind of a big scope of things, but we have a listing of the kinds of things that they could look at. But you're right, it's, it's more administrative than it used to be. In my youth of planning, we just denied stuff left and right as conditional uses. And you can't do that anymore, unless you can prove there's nothing you can do to mitigate the detrimental effects.
I guess, another way, with the, have things that are permitted, just not permitted.
Oh, yeah, we do that, too.
So taking that back on.
So the beginning of those charts, where we have the uses, we say if it's not listed, it's not permitted, it's not allowed.
Yeah, it, it's, yeah, that's the, be kind of the approach I, to do. They don't really work like they, like they ought to.
Yeah. I'll just qualify that a little bit, because, you know, sometimes you'll have something that's very similar to something that's listed, and the Planning Director gets to make an assessment and decide if those are appropriate or not. So you don't have to amend the ordinance, because really, that's what it would mean. If somebody came in with a new use, you'd have to go through the whole ordinance amendment process, see if you really want it in there or not, okay? All right. Well.
Questions? Thanks, John, and I think our resident draft person wanting to read the planning document, sixty chapters.
And that's not all you're gonna have. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next up, we have an in-state, I think. Mayor, is that, you or Mayor? It says, Mara?
You're stuck with me, it's a downgrade, for sure. I just wanna tee up real quick, and I'll, I'll invite Jeremy up for, for some more detail, if that's okay. We've been working really hard to make sure that, well, to follow through on the things that we committed to do. It's been important to me all along that we've, as we've talked about the Aspen Care Facility, that, that we don't just, I've never liked the idea of just a no. I just think that there's opportunity for collaboration beyond just, just a no. And so some time ago, when the, when the Chair of the Housing Authority gave me those three options that I outlined in our meeting a week or two ago, the option of purchasing the property and implementing some, some quality neighborhoods initiative-type projects was the, was the option that I got to work on right away. And they have asked for expediency. Obviously, there's, there's timelines and pressures for them for grants, and I wanna make sure that we're upholding our commitment to be, to be quick, but also I wanna make sure that we're being transparent. So Jeremy's gonna share some of the details of where we're at, what you guys could expect in terms of a transmittal that we're preparing, and some of the options that we will be able to consider moving forward. But I just wanna make sure that we're getting as much out on the table as, as it becomes available and sort of forecasting what to expect, so that we're being as transparent as we can while respecting the Housing Authority's request for expediency. Thanks.
Okay, well, happy to share with you kind of where we are in the process with this. So next week, there'll be much more detailed information, so the transmittal's being prepared that's, and will be routed to you soon, that will have a lot of this. and will be routed to you soon, that will have a lot of this detailed information, but we do want to give the high level points um, that we have right now. So as the mayor said, um, alluded to, that there has been uh, negotiation taking place where Ogden City RDA would actually purchase this property, the Aspen Care Center, uh, under the infill guidelines and Quality Neighborhood Initiative Program. Um, those funds that have been set aside for infill development, uh, similar to other ones we've done in the city would be used similarly to a similar infill project for this would be the proposal. Um, it's currently, there has been a real estate purchase contract um, that is in place. And so that was negotiated between both the RDA and Weber Housing Authority. Um, and as the mayor talked about, this would be an expedited um, transaction so that they are able to protect some of their funds and that, that type of thing. So they um, would be looking to do this um, before the end of the month. So this next week or so is gonna be critical for the due diligence period and really just determining what direction you ultimately want to go with this project, so. Um, had a lot of activity in the past week, just kind of scrambling to get the ducks in, in order, so we've had an appraisal done. Um, we've um, been talking about wanting to make sure it's um, that the Weber Housing Authority is made whole in the process, so that they're able to fulfill their mission. Um, serving, providing these services throughout Weber County. Um, and so we, we're looking at that along with the appraisal to make sure they're made whole and they can proceed and provide the, the services, so. Um, other than that, that's kind of the high level of where we're at. I'm happy to answer any questions now, or if you want to, you'll have the detail, like I said, coming in the transmittal over the next few days.
Let's have a quick clarification. Did you say um, it's with the RDA, so the contract's with the RDA?
It would be with the RDA, yes.
I guess I'm trying to, I didn't realize that that property was in the RDA.
It was, the, no, I'm sorry, the property, so the purchase agreement would be between the RDA and Weber Housing Authority, so is that what you're asking? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess it, I thought, but the RDA can purchase it anyway. I didn't know that.
Yeah, that, that goes with that.
Well, I've been here seven years.
Ginny, maybe quickly explain that, just so that people understand that, that RDA housing can be used anywhere in the state, city.
Well, and I guess we should distinguish, RDA housing money is um, is different than um, the Quality Neighborhoods Initiative money. So the Quality Neighborhoods Initiative money um, can actually be used in both, um, by both parties. So it's just a matter of uh, what um, makes sense um, to do that. So uh, the RDA uh, was the best vehicle for this, this type of purchase, gives us that flexibility that the RDA has. So that was what was determined to make the purchase with, under the RDA.
I just have another clarifying question, just for other people, if I'm understanding this correctly. So when we do RDA projects, we set aside a certain amount of funding for housing, so that's what you mean?
That's different, yeah.
Oh, it's different.
That housing money, that's a different.
Okay, well, I'm not making any clearer then.
So the, the money that, that comes from RDA areas, twenty percent of that goes into the housing fund.
Right.
And it can, it can be used for housing anywhere in the city, right? Doesn't have to be in an RDA area.
I, I think that's what you said.
Right, that's what I was saying, yeah, so I apologize, yeah, if I wasn't saying it correctly.
But it's different money than the Quality Neighborhood money.
Right, but we're putting Quality Neighborhood money in the RDA.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, sorry, I'm gonna get worse.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Just had a couple points too, I wanted to add that.
They're listed here, so you may.
Good, good, that, I wanted to make sure I followed orders there, so. Repsy is contingent of on council.
Real estate purchase.
RDA approval. And so the reason why we wanted to give this update now was because your action tonight is related to this, and so you'll, you'll see that uh, the first step is to move money from surplus uh, in the uh, BDO account um, into our uh, general, looks like that is going into the general fund, and then that will be transferred into, well, going into the Quality Neighborhoods funding, and then the second step is that's gonna be transferred into the RDA. So it's gonna be a two-step process tonight, and that'll be presented um, just as a budget amendment, so you won't be getting this level of detail in that presentation. Um, and then because of the expedience next week, you'll have the opportunity to, as an RDA board, to approve the real estate purchase contract.
That's right, and as she mentioned, that, that real estate purchase contract is contingent on your vote. So it is under contract, but it is, you'll have that opportunity to vote uh, for next week, that's a resolution for that.
Other questions? So I have a just, I mean, maybe ten questions. Um, you said that um, we want to make sure that Weber Housing Authority was, um, that the amount we are, is going to make them all necessarily the expense, anything else that went into over the last two years as far their time or their effort or anything, it's.
Yeah, I think it's addressing all of that, actually. So it would be everything from the purchase price to additional expenses that they've maybe incurred, you know, as long as it's somewhat in line with the appraisal, you know, we can, uh, we would recommend uh, moving forward with that. Um, but that, it does include those, so when we say made whole, would include, you know, if there's additional expenses incurred through the process of it.
Of purchasing it.
They would look at that.
Um, yeah, and I just want to comment, um, thank you very much for the administration to work on this. I know that the, our legislative body said, please come back with some options, I appreciate that. You've done, and there's um, been a lot of negotiating back and forth, or at least having a lot of. Thank you very much, Mayor, thank you. Um, and uh, I also want to say that this, um, to a few of you, and I know that the public was a little bit upset last time we all got to meet, but um, I was very uh, concerned at apprised of all the things that were going on before the public um, heard about it. So I appreciate that um, you allowed us, or you gave us the amount of. That, um, that's not always easy to take the hits from the public, but I appreciate you were able to give information. Information, um, and so thank you. Um, and then we were able to get, do our due diligence and get out and ask questions and, and talk to our constituencies. And so thank you very much, I know that that was hard on, I know the mayor is very open and, and transparent, and that was really uh, difficult on your end, so thank you. All right, any other things? Clear as mud of what we're doing? Thank you, thank you for your expedience, me too. Next. Our favorite part of the night is training. Ethics? Well, no, we can't do dinner, because Glenn's not getting up to. Can't we just watch a video? I'm just kidding. Yeah, go for it. They'll listen.
All right, so this is a very brief training of uh, open meetings law and conflicts of interest. So there is an open meeting, Open and Public Meetings Act, and um, it requires that the, the people's business be done openly, that there'll be open public process for transparency is the current word that everybody uses, as to the decisions that are made in the city. Um, and so this, for all meetings, and that, and always raises the question of what is a meeting? A meeting is any time when a quorum is present. Um, and you're, you're, you're talking about the people's business. And so this is a work session, there's no votes being taken in this session, but it is a workshop, so to speak, under the code, and therefore it's a public meeting. And um, anytime you're discussing, receiving comments, acting on a matter, uh, making advisory or recommendation, anything like that is a meeting. There's a couple of things that aren't a meeting that sometimes can trip us up. Um, if you just happen to have four members of the council that talk on the way to their cars, and, and it's just a chance meeting, where they see each other in a park or somewhere else, or if it's a social meeting, that's not a meeting. Nobody has to run away from each other if you happen to have a quorum of people that are there for, for a holiday meeting, that's a holiday party, that's a thing. But you also don't want to be talking about city business in that regard, okay? All right, um, now, some meetings can be closed to the public. And uh, and they fall under definite categories. And one is discussing individual, individual character, professional competence, or health. Strategy session regarding collective bargaining. Strategy session regarding um, litigation, and also a discussion systems. We've used that maybe twice since I've been here, once about an airport security issue, and once about a city security issue, but occasionally that's important to have. Um, well, we, I'm al- almost, you can't hear anything, can you?
Oh, no, you can't, it's just cutting in and out, so.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, one thing we oft- often use is in proceeding regarding criminal allegations or allegations of criminal conduct. So usually isn't involved in that, so we don't often deal with that in our meetings here. And then any strategy sessions regarding purchasing the property, leasing a property, exchanging it, same thing with water rights, water. Under this particular code and other areas of the code. Okay, so you all have gone through that a lot. Um, one question is often, are there any meetings that must be closed? And the answer is no. Um, you could conceivably not have a closed meeting if you decided closed meeting isn't necessary on any particular topic. Um, that, that's enough, you don't need to have a closed meeting on anything. There's also not any particular teeth as to a violation of a closed meeting. It's intended confidential, but it's, you all rely on each other for, for uh, following through on that requirement. That you're kind of um, agreeing to trust each other to have a very candid and confidential conversation regarding a sensitive topic. Guess that's enough on closed meetings, except um, there is the last provision, which is how to close them. You kind of go through this every time you have a closed meeting, and first of all, you have to have a quorum present when you just make that decision. Two-thirds of the members present must vote to close the meeting, you must do it from an open meeting. And um, and you have to have it on the calendar, everybody has to know that you're contemplating going into a closed meeting. And you have to have the reason set forth for the closed meeting and the location of the closed meeting. Any other questions or any questions regarding closed meetings? You guys are all pros at this.
I'm pro, I'm still. This works. A pub meeting.
Yes, yes, it is. Um, but it's also the room where we often have a closed me, a closed session, so sometimes confusing, yep, it's closed. I'm sorry, it's open, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question that doesn't really apply to us, but just boggled my mind?
Yeah.
If you have a three-member commission and two members are talking, how are they not in an open, in a, in a meeting that's open?
Yeah, it's a tricky thing, and, and they have to be careful about how they go and do that business. Um, there is a difference between legislative conversations and administrative conversations, and so the county commission has legal counsel kind of coach them on how to deal with that, because they can have administrative conversations in some cases. I haven't gone into that deeply, but that's, that's something they deal with often. But they don't have a mayor, for example, or a, or a city manager, and so they can have some of those administrative conversations. But yeah, if you have, uh, if you only have a body of, of three members, anytime two get together, you ought to be careful about what they're talking about. Yep.
Uh, they just have to, they just have to kind of watch it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
Okay. So what's forbidden during a closed meeting? You can't um, approve anything, you can't approve an ordinance, a resolution, a rule, a regulation, a contract, or appointment. Um, you can interview people in a closed session for a position within the administration, but you cannot interview somebody to fill an elected position. Sometimes there's a vacancy in elected position, there's a particular statute that says that interview has to happen in the public. Um, and then you can't have any final action, um, any final votes in a closed meeting. Okay, anything, any questions on closed meeting before we go on to conflicts of interest? And I really am um, trying to do it briefly, so you can ask questions if you have them, but also just to kind of keep in your mind, so if you have a question, you can talk to me later and say, okay, this is something that's always bothered me or wondered about, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. All right, conflicts of interest, um, so the, there's three different sources of our conflict of interest regulations. One is state law, one is ordinance, and the other is your own council norms. And so this short presentation is kind of mixing all those into one, and they are quite a bit overlapping. But the, the things that you can't do is you can't um, get compensation for assistance in a municipal transaction unless you disclose a conflict of interest. And so, for example, um, let's suppose you're an attorney, and, and you work in my office as a prosecutor, and you also are doing something on the outside, you can't take your client and walk them through the planning process, walk them through the Planning Commission, that sort of stuff, without a disclosure and without being involved in it from the city side. Same thing with accountants, um, engineers, architects, all those sorts of people have this potential conflict. Um, you may have an interest in a business entity regulated by the city. Anybody who's in a business in the city, you might fall into this category, and the answer is just put it on your disclosure form, that you have an interest in that business. And that ought to, um, that ought to cover this particular concern. You may have an interest in a business entity doing business with the city, um, so not just being regulated by, but actually um, contracting with the city, doing business with the city, that's also a type of conflict of interest. And that will require some disclosure, it may require more, that I'll talk about in a minute. You may um, you may be involved in investments, creating the conflicts of interest with your duties. And, and in all cases, even if you disclose it, you can't be involved in approval of public contracts with a member of your family or yourself. Council rule also has, um, council norms also have additional rule that um, if you find that you have an immediate and direct financial interest in the matter that's before a city council meeting, according to the net, the council norms, you will recuse yourself and walk out during the conversation. Um, like, that's not required by law, that's just something that you've all kind of said, we can, we can accept that as a, a reasonable approach. So um, you'll hear it now, and then you'll have questions later, and so my, the first thing I'll tell you is, when in doubt, disclose the conflict. And um, and we'll talk about that a little bit on the next slide, but disclosing the conflict can resolve most of your conflicts from a legal perspective. And um, and there's two ways to disclose that, so we'll get to that in just a minute. When in doubt, call the city attorney, I've had conversations with many city council members over the years, saying, okay, I want you to guide me through this conflict, and, and we've been able to get them there. And then another key point is reject any cash gift, um, even if it's a small amount. Doesn't, it doesn't count for ca- campaign contributions, but any cash gift is just gonna be presumptively a problem. There is an exception for occasional non-monetary gifts under fifty dollars, and so if somebody, if you go to lunch with somebody and they buy lunch, I don't think you're gonna have a problem as long as they're up buying lunch every week for you as, as part of your compensation. Um, but an occasional non-monetary gift is not gonna be a problem. So you want to disclose in writing, there is a form. So you want to disclose in writing, there is a form at the recorder's office. And many of you use that and it kind of walks you through the process. And then, once you've put that in writing in the recorder's office, it's also a good form and consistent with, with your desire to disclose, to just disclose it in the meeting. So for example, you might say, my employer is XYZ Corporation or agency. And this is a plan, this is a zoning decision that might affect them. And if you disclose that, that might resolve the conflict completely. But just because you can participate, doesn't mean you should. And that's really for your discretionary decision. And so the law kind of airs on the side of disclosure with the idea that the, the voters will decide whether you did well or didn't do well in, in voting on something that you disclose as a conflict. That, that the law wants you to disclose and once you disclose, you can take action in most things unless it's a, a direct and immediate benefit on a contract or something like that. And, and you know, at the, at the state level, many legislators vote on things that ultimately involve their business and other things. And so it's not such a strange thing. It is legislative action that you're taking rather than administrative action. And so everybody understands that you're taking the big picture. But, but I always say that to everybody that just because you can, doesn't mean you should. And that's a decision only for you to make. All right, anybody have any questions? Okay.
Any questions? Yeah, that was way faster than a video.
Good. Do you want me to go back and review it a little, with a little more in depth?
No, I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gabe. All right. Barry?
Cybersecurity.
Yes, we're going to talk about cybersecurity. I'll be pretty brief with this. But just want to give you some updates, some information around Ogden City and cybersecurity. So as a quick introduction, Barry Chapman, I work as the network operations manager here at the city. And we take care of all the backing infrastructure, me and my team do, including firewalls, which includes all the security that we put in place. But the, the things that we can put in place is only a piece of the puzzle. The bigger piece is actually you guys. I'm sure you get tired of hearing all the cybersecurity talk, but the reason that is is because most of the breaches, most of the incidents that occur is from end users. And that's why we want to do a little bit of training to get you to just understand the need of, and the diligence. And I know i- in my experience, I've seen a lot of you guys be very diligent in this and seeing the emails, right? Some of the things that come across. And Ogden City IT is here for you, for sure, in all senses of that word. If you have any questions, concerns, you're, you're not sure about an email, a text, a message that pops up, you can reach out to IT and we will help negotiate that for you. But you know, as you can see through, through this first slide, cybersecurity, one in about a hundred emails has malicious content in it. Things that are going to try and get your attention to click on, to make reactions. Every day, there's over a million cybersecurity threats that occur. And that's just, you know, just in the States, right? Mobile is one that's coming up substantially. I think last year, the numbers that were presented were somewhere around a hundred. Now we're at, you know, five hundred and sixty thousand mobile threats. That's because that's where we live, right? Everybody lives on your phone, so that's where the malicious attackers are trying to get you is where you're, where you're coming in. And again, ninety-nine percent of all cyber attacks rely on a human to do something, to get, get a file in, to do something to help that breach. Let's see. Cybersecurity costs, these go up tremendously every year. As a matter of fact, as I was building this one, twenty twenty-four was somewhere around five trillion. The estimated, and it actually reached nine point five trillion dollars. This is worldwide on what the cost of cybersecurity is to all of IT infrastructure. Twenty twenty-five, it's projected to be over twelve trillion dollars. The cost of cybersecurity events. Some of the things that we do is in the city is, these numbers are a little bit old, but you know, sent and received, I think is actually closer to fifteen, fifteen million. And you don't even see probably half of them because they are blocked all the way at the backend, right? Before it even gets to you. We've got a couple of layers of security in there that check all of the emails that come in to try and prevent things. There's a cooperation, Microsoft three sixty-five, they actually can see these and be able to predictively stop them before they even get to us. So that's, that's a big part of how we're trying to help prevent those. But there's still some that come through. The aftermath, if a cybersecurity attack happens, they can be very, very devastating. Easily in the five million range, just to begin, right? And they can go way up from there. Service disruptions, you know, nobody's happy when your computer's not working smooth or at all, right? And that's part of what cybersecurity incidents can do. And then it's all talk about recovery, how long it takes to get your data back and how, how, how much of that data can we retrieve? Within the city, we do some backups and things to try and help that and keep it to a minimum if there is anything, but there's always exceptions to the rules. One thing to, you know, this slide is just talking about PII, personal identifiable information. This is what the cyber actors are trying to get. Because if they can get that, whether it's a personal information about the city or you yourself, right? This is also about your personal life, right? We don't want you personally hit by any cyber threats at all. And so these are some of the things that they're just trying to accomplish. And if you watch any of these short little videos that talk about some of these actors, they are phenomenally good at getting this information. I've seen some that, you know, people are giving out their passwords without even knowing it, quick and easy. And that's, that's what their skill is. That's their skill set because they make a lot of money out of it. So you know, any of this information, you want to be protective of, right? We're always protective, but just be aware, you know, you, you send the information one way, it might get through, right? And that's all part of the social engineering. This is the people that do these attacks. They're really good at social manipulation, getting you to put down your guard and give information out, right? So this is where that human element comes into play with cybersecurity. You just want to be careful on how you're giving that information out, whether that's email, text, even verbally, right? Somebody walks up to you on the street, starts asking you questions, asking about your chi, your children or dogs, and now they have your password, right? The, pretty common, right? Just be careful of your links and your downloads. Anything, when you get an email, just think, are you expecting it? Is this something you're expecting? One of the easiest things that I always recommend is just check who it's coming from. As of the last month or so, I know there's been a bunch of emails that supposedly came from the mayor or even Mara, asking for gift cards. If you look at who it came from, it wasn't an OgdenCity.gov user. And that was the quick and easy delete done and over, right? That's how you can tell very quickly is, did it actually come from OgdenCity.gov email address? That solidifies where it actually came in. Cycle manipulation, again, these are the tactics these people use, right? Fear and urgency, you got to do this right now. I'm in a meeting, I can't talk, but I need you to do this right this minute, right? These are ones that we've seen. They want to be helpful. They try and build that trust. Hey, I'm your best friend. But in reality, they're trying to get your data and they're doing that for their financial gain, right? Phishing is one of the biggest ways they're doing this. Phishing just simply means they're trying to gather your PII, right? They're, they're, they're throwing their, their lure out there, trying to get you to bite, right? Through any, any mechanism, right? And don't forget text. I think they have a special word for it. I can't remember right now, but phishing over text. Phishing, there's like thirty terms, but in, in all of the media that you're using, they are trying to find ways to get in. It used to be just an email. Now they'll even phone call. They'll make phone calls. One of the things to be very aware of is something I'm sure you guys have heard and hear a lot about is AI, right? AI has brought a huge new era into cybersecurity on both sides, right? It, we use it in IT and some of our infrastructure to actually prevent cyber attacks. But on the other side, because of its intelligence, it actually is one of the biggest threats. So you have to use AI to combat AI. But AI does all kinds of stuff. It's pretty amazing. Some of the stuff they've been able to do, two seconds of your voice, and they can make a phone call and make your mom think that you're in jail. And all kinds of things like that. So that's all part of that AI. One of the things that is been talked about quite a bit is with your family or your closest, make sure you have a keyword, quick little keyword, you know, that, that you can share, whether that's a phrase or a word, so they can say, what was your favorite color, mom? And you have an answer, right? Or they don't. And that's a quick way because you, you wouldn't tell, you wouldn't be able to tell whether it's your actual sibling parent or an AI. That's how good they're getting. Ransomware is one of the biggest concerns that we as in IT have actually for the city. And there's a lot of reasons for that. Sixty-two percent of all, all cyber attacks are ransomware. This is where people get, get your money when it boils down to it. Sixty percent of that sixty-two people actually have paid the ransom. It's highly recommended against because if you look at the last, second to last bullet point, four percent of those sixty percent that paid it actually got their data. Most of it, it's, if they get you your data, it's unusable, it's still encrypted. They've already released the PII, whatever it is. To help combat this with the city, we actually do this three-to-one backup rule. It's, it's three copies of your data backed up on two different medias and one is offsite. This is a formula that's been in the industry forever. And this is some of the reasons why if it's corrupt here locally, we have a backup offsite, we can usually try and recover it. And this is part of what we do for the city. One of the things to pay attention to, we always love talking about passwords. With our passwords, this chart, if you can see it, kind of goes through how easy it is to break a password. So if it's just numerical, you could have eighteen digits, a numerical password, and it takes nine months at best to break it, right? If you do a standard, you know, a lot of us have four-digit pins, it can be cracked literally instantly now. You start moving up the line, getting numerical and, you know, putting alphabet, uppercase, lowercase. It's not until you really receive, you know, over, what is it, twelve characters? And uppercase, lowercase, special characters, that you actually are protected. The city, we only require eight currently. That, that's it. And if you look at where that eight falls, it's not the best. It's pretty easy to crack your password. And, and we only require you change your password every six months. Well, it can be cracked in a couple of weeks. So they have your passwords. Pawn Me, I think is a website, if you're ever interested. Your passwords, you'd be surprised how many of them are actually out there. They have these ways of getting, they don't actually end up getting your password as it is. It's encrypted, but they find ways to brute force those and they publicize them. People make lots of money by putting your passwords out there. Because what do they get with the password? They get into your systems, start getting your PII, right? Where they can start manipulating you, threatening you, whatever it takes to have you open your pocketbook for them. One of the things the city does that I'm sure you're all aware of to help prevent this is two FA, two-factor authentication. We've implemented dual. I'll tell you, we see daily the benefits of this from IT. We have people that today, we had a fraudulent login somehow. They probably used the password somewhere because of duo. The culprit wasn't able to get in. You see those, if, if you're, if you're getting the duo pushes and it wasn't you, mark it and be aware if to get to that point, they had to have your username and password. So if you see a duo push, it wasn't you, the first thing we're going to ask you to do is change your password. But now we are protected because we have that two factor. You can put this two factor on all your other personal accounts. If you don't have it on your bank account, go into your bank and get it put on. It's a little bit of a, you know, block in between usability and security, right? Those are the two balancing points you always want to, we always talk about. We want it to be usable, but you also need security. Sir?
My laptop needs a duo. Get to my email.
Yes. It's remembered on your iPad because of the credentials, but every, when you initially had to set it up, you did get the duo. So it's configured in the way iPads work is it's just remember credentials until you change your password. When you change your password, it should be asking for a duo push.
Yeah, I think it.
Yeah. It is fairly secure, but with AI, it's, it's not that, yes. A duo, and it depends. There's, there's always variations to it. And I appreciate, you know, the information or the comments because facial recognition, retina scans, these are all part of two-factor authentication that you can use, right? I'm sure your phone, like mine, is my face or my fingerprint, right? There is security to it. Just don't use it by itself. That's the key. You just want to have multiple factors. So if you have a password and facial recognition, you're doing a lot better, right? That's where you want to get into. The top six takeaways that we're going to, that we've talked about today. Use a passphrase. We like to use that comment instead of a password. I love football, right? Whatever it is, I'm personally not a football fan, but that wouldn't work for me, but it might work for you, right? Some, or I like the Packers or whoever it is, right? You want to get up to that fifteen characters. One of the standards that's being talked about actually within the city, we're looking to implement is pushing to the six, large passphrases. But with that can come the lack, you don't have to change your password as often. It's recommended actually by some of the federal and other government entities that, and cybersecurity entities, that you shouldn't change your password. Because you're, if you change it a lot, you're using repetitive, repetitive, easy to guess signatures. And so if you do a big, long one, you don't have to change it as often. With that comes a password manager. Always recommend password manager. We're working on some stuff within the city on this as well. A password manager lets you generate special passwords that you wouldn't remember if you wanted to. You could, but they're not fun to, but you can keep them in there and you're using your face, your two, two FA to access the password manager. That's where now you're not using the same password for Ogden City as you did Gmail. So if Gmail gets hacked, now they get into your, into your city account, right? And that's where a password manager really helps manage those. So you're not using the same password everywhere. Recognize social engineering, right? When somebody's trying to gather information from you, just understand what their intent is. And you know, the point I, I made at the beginning and going to make at the end, you're the first and last line of defense. You know, if, if you have any questions, feel free to, you know, reach out to IT. There is a cybersecurity training that, or actually it's going to be AI training. There's going to be a cybersecurity one that the city's going to put on and record it. I, I highly recommend. Some of this data actually came from last year's, but updated, our last year's cybersecurity training. But we are the best layer, right? I can have all the hardware in the backend, all the security features in the backend, but it, it, it's minimal in comparison to what you guys have the power. We put all the power in your hands because that's where it needs to be. We put all the power in your hands because that's where it needs to be, for sure. But just be aware, with great power comes great responsibility.
So for AI?
Yes.
Is it back to back days for an hour or is it two days here for an hour? Monday, Tuesday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, or whatever it is, and over at the public work building two days?
I don't think it's two days in a row. Yeah, there there are different options for for that. Yeah, yeah. And and just just for a big picture on that, just so you understand, AI is a very awesome tool. Use it, just understand the risks. And that's what we're talking about. Just, you know, for instance, if you go in really briefly, if you go into ChatGPT today, anything that you type in, any data that you put in, is now public. So anybody else, this is a problem that we've seen with AI implemented into some other cities where they let AI cruise their data, it learned off of it, and now somebody asks questions that they shouldn't have access to, right? Pay is not one that, you know, we're publics or pay is not very private anyways. But other information that is confidential, it's not. So if you're putting in PII into ChatGPT today, anybody in the world can grab that information and ask questions about it. So that that's a lot of what this AI training is going to go over is use it, just be wise in how you're using it. Just be aware of of the use cases. When, you know, when computers first came out, it was this this big risk of, you know, nobody's going to have a job anymore, computers are going to do it. AI is this next one. It is a great tool, I'm happy to see it, we just have to use it the right way. Any other questions? I think I'm done unless you have anything else.
Good job.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Over the years, just even last week. All right. Council comments, any council comments, Janine?
I did want to ask, so there's this air taxi demonstration next Tuesday, the eleventh, starts at three. And I know a couple of you have expressed interest in going. And so I'm just wondering if there is interest in starting the work session a little bit later, either four thirty or five, with the understanding that you might have to come back into the work session for maybe thirty minutes after the meeting. There's only two items on the agenda for next week. It's airport CRA, two actions associated with airport CRA, and the repsy that was that Mayor and Jeremy talked about.
I'd be okay to come.
Yeah, I know mine's starting late, I don't know if I can attend that event. I'm starting later.
Yeah, well, we have RSVP to that, how many people have they taken? I have not.
It just said limited, it didn't say how many.
And it didn't really say how long it was going to take either.
I would think it would be an hour, though. So but, you know, I don't know. Okay, if we start at four thirty, we may be able to get through everything.
Like spot.
Me too.
I was just gonna, sorry, bring up that I was at the Utah Renewable Energy Agency Board meeting yesterday, and that is still happening. I know it's been years and years and years.
So you say.
But the timeline, you know, has moved forward a little bit farther. There, things have gone to the public commission, you know, things are in process. But the release that may began is, I think it was April of twenty twenty six. However, they did advise that cities should put in their budgeting for next year, the money for the outreach to community members if we did determine to stay involved. And unfortunately, over all those years, the postage and marketing materials have doubled in cost, basically. And so I think for our city, I'll have to look back at the notes, it's around fifty five thousand dollars. And that's sending a mailer out to everyone initially from Rocky Mountain Power about the program in order to let them know they can opt out if they'd like, because it's automatic opt in. And then the second notice would go via email only to the people that are email subscribers that get their bill electronically and then mail to the people that that don't. So they're trying to cut some costs there, just because it has doubled. But that's just something to put on everybody's radar, you know, maybe we could have an update in the next couple of months about, you know, where the process is, if people are interested in catching up. But that's basically where we are, it's still going on. But that was just a note to maybe put in our budget discussion.
So I missed it to start with, this is the Community Renewable Energy Program?
Yes, it's actually changed its name to the Utah Renewable Energy Agency, because we formed that agency. So now it's just called something different.
Thank you.
And we already have the fifty five thousand or whatever that original amount was set aside, it's just in fund balance. So it would just be a matter of adding the additional funds.
Yeah, and so it doesn't totally double it completely because of that change with the email thing. So it's probably just a little bit more than whatever it was to begin with.
Madam Chair, I just have a could do this in the public meeting, but I'm doing this one here. Just to our city in the legislative session administrative been outstanding in a lot of particular, some housing projects that are coming for the legislature. I'm chairing an outstanding, your trans chamber legislative committee and those things and then myself, really bringing on committee and presentation and with Northern Utah Chamber Coalition, NUC, the abbreviation of that. That's highly effective and again, want bring that to effective finish something.
Thanks. And very early. I know. All right, I do care. With that, we will move into our our real meeting.